Good afternoon, everyone. This is a 3:03 city council meeting today. For the record, today is July 8th, 2025. It's 3:03 PM. It's a city council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do we have any introductions or announcements today?
We have several. So I'll start off. At our June 24th voting meeting, council unanimously adopted Resolution 2025-1917, placing Proposition 485, a utility franchise election, on the November 4th general election ballot. The current franchise agreement with APS expires in May of 2026, and the council has determined that it is beneficial for the city to grant a new franchise to APS, conferring the right to utilize the city's rights of way for the provision of electricity. Arguments for and against Proposition 485 will be accepted by the City Clerk's Office June 25th through 5:00 PM on August 8th. Citizens are encouraged to submit and pay for their arguments through the following link. Argument form, however, arguments may also be filed via email, city.clerk@prescott-az.gov in Word format. Submitted arguments must meet the following criteria. Number one, they shall not exceed 300 words in length. Number two, they shall be accompanied by $100 per argument fee. Number three, they shall include the name of the individual or committee chair, if sponsored by a political committee, the address and telephone number of those providing the arguments. For additional information regarding Proposition 485 and the APS franchise agreement and to complete your argument form online, please visit the election information page of the city website or contact the City Clerk's Office at 928-777-1437. Our next announcement is the City Council Subcommittee on Appointments is currently seeking applications from citizens who are interested in serving on the following city boards, commissions, and committees. The Fire Board of Appeals, there are three vacancies of varying terms. You must be a resident of the city to apply for this board. The Tourism Advisory Committee, this is a short term until March of 2026. The Civic Enhancement Committee, also a short term until December of 2026. And the Prescott Preservation Commission, a short term until March of 2026. Boards, commissions, and committees provide opportunities for citizens to take an active role in their local government. Members are appointed to the city council upon recommendation from the Council Subcommittee on Appointments following the review of your applications. Applications are due to the city by 5:00 PM on Friday, July 11th, 2025. For more information, visit the city's website at City of Prescott Boards and Commissions Vacancies, or contact the City Clerk's Office at 928-777-1437. And that's it.
Thank you very much for that brief list of announcements. Appreciate it very much. We will start with an invocation from Pastor Kyle Gustafson from the Heights Church, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance from Councilman Moore, and then we'll do roll call, and we have a proclamation after that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, my name's Kyle. I'm a pastor over at Heights Church, and Heights has been here for several decades, and a lot of people in our church definitely call Prescott home. And so thank you for letting me come in here and do this. So if we could, let's go ahead and let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, God, I want to thank you for this moment in time where we can come together as a community, as a family, and to try and manage our future well. God, that you are still working mightily through Prescott and its people. God, the people here who you have handpicked to help guide and manage this amazing home. God, we just ask that you give them wisdom, discernment, full context of every decision that's made, and just a deep understanding of the impact that those decisions make. God, just keep working in the hearts of your people. We look up at you, and we see you for who you are, and we love you. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor, good.
Present.
of support here.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
All right.
Here.
Parks and Recreation Month, July 2025.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country,
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
including the City of Prescott, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. We now have a proclamation for National Parks and Recreation Month.
wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and
Councilman Moore?
I would like to invite all of our amazing Prescott, City of Prescott Parks and Rec whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation staff to come up and join us, please. encourages physical activities by promoting space for popular sports, hiking trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as recreation programming, youth sports, And they keep coming. Awesome. and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks How many is that? I don't think I heard that. Yeah? and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Prescott recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. Many of you may not know our new Parks and Recreation Director, Kristi Diaz. I'm going to say this wrong.
I'll help you.
Yeah.
Kristi Diaz Trayhan.
Trayhan, thank you. I'm sure you would like to say a few words, and I would like to present this certificate to you for National Recreation Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
First, Mayor, Council, thank you for proclaiming Prescott as one of the hundreds of thousands of communities that are recognizing Parks and Recreation for the month of July. Behind me are the most dedicated, committed group of men and women that are your park and recreation professionals. They're the ones out there making sure that our programs are top-notch, our facilities are well-kept and tidy, our trails are fun and adventurous. I am blessed to be here, and over the years, you will hear me come up with a single word as it relates to Parks and Recreation. And I'm a firm believer that all of the work that we do in this profession revolves around the word connection. And what we do, all of these things that were proclaimed, is about connecting people to people, people to nature, and people to community, and that's what this team does. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We can go that way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good. We'll now proceed to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have one comment card today, and it is from D. Carter LaBarre.
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is D. Carter LaBarre, President of Prescott. I'd like to speak to you about the $15 million that has been allocated by the state towards the rodeo grounds improvement. And as there's been a lot of controversy over the last year or two over this $15 million, I would like to just suggest and request that this council make certain that one of the criteria in the disbursement of any of these funds is that there are no bonuses, commissions, or increases in salary to any employees, associates, or consultants of the rodeo can be included in any of the disbursements of any funds used for rodeo improvements. That's all. Thanks very much.
Tony Hamer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for hearing me. I have a question for you. Has Prescott lost its way? Prescott stands at a crossroads, balancing its rich heritage with pressures from residents, at times advocating restrictive and somewhat times nonsensical ideas. The present election highlights tensions with divisive rhetoric, underscoring a split between the tradition and the liberalization of Prescott. The city council's rejection of the 2025 general plan, roundly criticized for misaligned policies, reflects some responsiveness to community concerns, signaling that Prescott is actively shaping its identity through civic participation. Prescott's vision, as outlined in its strategic plan, focuses on economic growth, community preservation, infrastructure and services, youth engagement, and community partnerships, strengthening ties with neighboring towns and local organizations. Collaborative leadership and recent disputes, such as that between Kathy Rusing and Kel Palguta, the Prescott Valley Mayor, do not reflect well on us as a city. With those ideas within the strategic plan and within the vision, I would urge that city council, as it puts together its agenda for each of these meetings, looks at those priorities and addresses those priorities. It is not something which is just there for good looks. It is something there that's for prioritization. Prescott must avoid drifting towards an economy reliant on luxury, exclusivity, and affluent visitors, as seen in places like Aspen and Boulder up in Colorado. Instead, it should blend innovation with tradition, fostering inclusive growth. The city council must envision, lead decisively, set scope and boundaries, prioritizing transparent communication through town halls, digital platforms, and the like. Engaging residents directly will counter diverse sentiment and ensure Prescott's direction aligns with its community's values, rejecting isolationism and activism or elitist trends. Finally, the recast of the general plan needs experienced professional leadership that has firm direction on the scope and goals, not just a sausage machine mashing ideas together and costing the taxpayers millions. Thank you.
Very well. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull any items from consent? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda A through F.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Our next item is the consent ordinance.
All right, there's a few of these, so bear with me.
It's gonna be a long one.
Adoption of ordinance number 2025-1898, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Prescott, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for the general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending on the 30th day of June 2026. Adoption of ordinance number 2025-1901, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of an ingress and egress easement to Arizona Public Service for access to APS-owned property for the expansion of the Willow Creek substation, authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said underground utility easement. Adoption of ordinance number 2025-1902, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public easement, public utility easement, from 1212 Warrior Way LLC, authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. And adoption of ordinance number 2025-1904, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving city contract number 2026-044, a land purchase agreement buy-in between the city and LEC Holdings LLC for the design and installation of a new air traffic control tower at the Prescott Regional Airport.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. That was great. Does any member of the council wish to pull any of the four consent ordinances for discussion or comment? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion for the items 9A, B, C, and D.
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance items 9A through 9D.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Item 10A is liquor license.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Michelle Ann Moore, applicant for the county seat, location 120 West Gurley Street. The application fees have been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
So I understand this is an ownership change?
Yes, it is.
Is the applicant present? Guess not, so we'll proceed.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve the liquor license application, number 34650-6571, for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for the county seat, location 120 West Gurley Street.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Item B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 3 in-state microbrewery liquor license application from John Darrell Allen, applicant for the Mile High Beer Project, location 219 North Cortez Street, Suite D. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present? Do you want to come up and tell us about your new project?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is John Allen. I am looking to open a brewery next to Peregrine Books on North Cortez and open the area of the NOCO district for more entertainment.
Is that the old Wade's Furniture property?
It is, sir.
That's a pretty good-sized space.
It is.
Well, I know there's some people say there's never enough beer. I think people agree with me here. That's good. Well, we wish you good luck with that, and yeah, that whole NOCO area is really turning into an entertainment venue, so good luck.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application, number 347995, for a new Series 3 in-state microbrewery liquor license for Mile High Beer Project, 219 North Cortez Street.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Also passes 7-0.
Again, good luck. I hope you complete your project. Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda.
Approval of city contract number 2026-045 for the fiscal year 26 pavement preservation SR 89 and Prescott Lakes Parkway project, and approval of night work.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Janet Ramsey, Public Works, and you'll recognize our pavement management program manager, Greg Patrick, at the podium. Anytime that you see the two of us together, you know we're going to talk about one of our favorite subjects. And I'm looking around the room today, and I think it's the favorite subject of a lot of people. So welcome. But anyway, today, the item on your agenda is for pavement management project, the first of our fiscal year 2026. Greg is going to provide some of the details of the project, but before he does that, I never want to pass on the opportunity to talk about the pavement management program itself. I want to remind our citizens and travelers that the program is a very technical program. That means it eliminates all of the subjectivity, it eliminates the worst-first criteria, because in fact, we get the biggest bang for our buck when we do those midlife cycle pavement preservation projects. You've seen a bunch of them going on around. And of course, we've disrupted things just a little bit. I like to think all for the good, because in the long term, we have an increased PCI, we have a lot longer longevity on our infrastructure investment, and so that's all the things that we want to do. We get a lot of questions from folks. People want to ask us, among other things, why can't we do all the work at night? There's some good reasons for that, and part of it is because obviously, we need to be able to see where we're going. Safety is a big concern, and not all of our winding roads and some of our areas are amenable to that. If we put up big signs, and we put up those lights, and the things that we need to do to construct, then it will look like I-17 is your headed down. If you do that at night, you'll know how difficult that is. And so safety is a big concern. We also do a lot of coordination for all of our projects. So we're always talking to utilities, and we're talking to others, making sure that if there's another project that's eminently scheduled, we coordinate those. We're looking at school schedules, that's a huge factor, and so we want to jam as much in in the summertime as possible. And then there's also a chemistry factor. Sun and heat are friends when it comes to asphalt and asphalt products, and so we get better cure, we get a better adhesion when we use the daytime, the sun and heat and the temperatures. So those are all a lot of the reasons, but I wanted to make sure you understand, we are coordinating, we do those things, and we do think about that. That said, tonight, or today, we are asking for night work, because we will do that when that's appropriate for this project. It is going to be a big project. The procurement process that we use for this is the Government Procurement Alliance, One GPA. You hear that a lot, and that's kind of the warehouse of cooperative contracts, low bid. And so now I'll turn it over to Greg, and he can talk a little bit about the parameters, and we'll answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Janet, Mayor and Council. This project includes improving the Highway 89 from Yavapai Connector to Willow Lake Road, and Prescott Lakes Parkway from Highway 89 to Highway 69. These roadways serve as vital corridors, and maintaining them in good condition is critical to preserving safety, mobility, and mobility throughout the city and surrounding communities. The plan is to begin on Highway 89 to take advantage of optimal temperatures, like Janet was saying, especially during the summertime. Construction is anticipated to begin the end of July, beginning of August, and is expected to last for 120 days. The sequence on Highway 89 will be as followed. We'll begin by patching those areas that have significant failures. We'll lower the utilities, such as manholes, water valves. We'll then mill the surface down approximately two inches prior to paving. We are anticipating approximately 1,000 tons per day on production, and we'll be paving back those areas that we mill out on Highway 89, so that nobody will be driving on a milled surface. We will be using a stone matrix asphalt. This is a durable, high-performance mix, made with less sand and a higher percentage of coarse aggregate, to create a stone-on-stone structure reinforced with added
our pavement management program manager, Greg Patrick, at the podium. Anytime that you see the two of us together, you know we're going to talk about one of our favorite subjects. And I'm looking around the room today and I think it's the favorite subject of a lot of people. So, welcome. But, anyway, today, the item on your agenda is for pavement management project, the first of our fiscal year 2026. Greg is going to provide some of the details of the project, but before he does that, I never want to pass on the opportunity to talk about the pavement management program itself. I want to remind our citizens and travelers that the program is a very technical program. That means it eliminates all of the subjectivity, it eliminates the worst-first criteria, because in fact, we get the biggest bang for our buck when we do those midlife cycle pavement preservation projects. You've seen a bunch of them going on around. And of course, we've disrupted things just a little bit. I like to think all for the good, because in the long term, we have an increased PCI. We have a lot longer longevity on our infrastructure investment. And so, that's all the things that we want to do. We get a lot of questions from folks. People want to ask us, among other things, why can't we do all the work at night? There's some good reasons for that, and part of it is because, obviously, we need to be able to see where we're going. Safety is a big concern, and not all of our winding roads and some of our areas are amenable to that. If we put up big signs and we put up those lights and the things that we need to do to construct, then it will look like I-17 as you're headed down. If you do that at night, you'll know how difficult that is. And so, safety is a big concern. We also do a lot of coordination for all of our projects. So, we're always talking to utilities and we're talking to others, making sure that if there's another project that's eminently scheduled, we coordinate those. We're looking at school schedules, that's a huge factor. And so, we want to jam as much in in the summertime as possible. And then, there's also a chemistry factor. Sun and heat are friends when it comes to asphalt and asphalt products. And so, we get better cure, we get a better adhesion when we use the daytime, the sun and heat and the temperatures. So, those are all a lot of the reasons, but I wanted to make sure you understand, we are coordinating, we do those things, and we do think about that. That said, tonight, or today, we are asking for night work, because we will do that when that's appropriate for this project. It is going to be a big project. The procurement process that we use for this is the Government Procurement Alliance, One GPA. You hear that a lot, and that's kind of the warehouse of cooperative contracts, low bid. And so, now I'll turn it over to Greg, and he can talk a little bit about the parameters, and we'll answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Janet, Mayor and Council. This project includes improving the Highway 89 from Yavapai Connector to Willow Lake Road and Prescott Lakes Parkway from Highway 89 to Highway 69. These roadways serve as vital corridors, and maintaining them in good condition is critical to preserving safety, mobility, and mobility throughout the city and surrounding communities. The plan is to begin on Highway 89 to take advantage of optimal temperatures, like Janet was saying, especially during the summertime. Construction is anticipated to begin the end of July, beginning of August, and is expected to last for 120 days. The sequence on Highway 89 will be as followed. We'll begin by patching those areas that have significant failures. We'll lower the utilities, such as manholes, water valves. We'll then mill the surface down approximately two inches prior to paving. We are anticipating approximately 1,000 tons per day on production, and we'll be paving back those areas that we mill out on Highway 89, so that nobody will be driving on a milled surface. We will be using a Stone Matrix asphalt. This is a durable, high-performance mix, made with less sand and a higher percentage of coarse aggregate, to create a stone-on-stone structure reinforced with added fibers. It offers greater resistance to rutting, cracking, rutting and cracking versus regular asphalt, making it ideal for a high-traffic, critical roadways such as Highway 89. We'll finish up by striping and then raising the utilities back to where they belong. Along Prescott Lakes Parkway, the sequence will pretty much be the same. Other than the milling, we're going to only take down about 3/4 of an inch. And then, the surface treatment will be a chip seal with a seal coat over the top. This will hold the chips in place, as well as sealing the surface. The chip seal will provide a high-friction surface that improves water shedding and enhances traction, especially important for navigating the grade during icy conditions. Again, and then we'll follow it up with striping and raising those utilities back into place. Do you guys have any questions?
Janet, I think our goal is to try to get our PCI up around 80, isn't that right?
I think that's a lofty goal, Mayor, quite honestly, but it is a goal. I do, too. And I would certainly never argue with you that that's not the optimal for a city. We're at about 75 right now. Greg, is that?
74.
Okay. So, we're close. We've made a lot of progress in the last year or two, but right now, we're really kind of stressing. We'll ebb and flow a little bit on the reconstruction versus the pavement preservation. We focused a lot lately on the pavement preservation, and those don't increase the PCI as much, but they do help it last a lot longer. So, I would love to get to an 80, Mayor. That would be ideal, and all we need is, you know, a few more million dollars. Yeah.
There's never enough money.
That's right.
Well, I know we recently did a fog seal, a chip seal, on some of our roads that were in a little bit better condition, and that allows them to last quite a bit longer before we, something major like a mill and fill here.
That's absolutely right.
What's the cost differential between the two? If you did a mile of mill and fill versus a mile of chip seal or fog seal?
I believe the cost per yard for a mill and fill is roughly about $125. The seal coat that we just applied is $5 a square yard, $6 a square yard.
Yeah, that's such a substantial difference.
It is.
And even though sometimes the motorists are a little bit concerned about inconvenience, boy, I tell you, the cost to be able to maintain that with a preservation seal coat versus having to go and mill and fill is just tremendously cost-effective.
That's absolutely right.
And it's easier to get that higher PCI if we can spread those treatments
Right.
out over a larger area. If we're doing nothing but reconstruction, we can't get nearly as much done for the dollar.
Right.
And so, it's all about the volume. Will really change that PCI.
Well, I certainly encourage your efforts, and if we can get that PCI up to a level that we can maintain, and then just do fog seal or chip seal to keep it going for a number of years, then you'll have more money to do the bigger jobs.
That is the optimal goal, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Furrworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. As we're driving up 89, right past the VA Hospital,
Yes.
it is the smoothest road in all, the whole town, that anyone's ever driven on. I'd like go, aha. When we pick it up at Yavapai Connector and keep going north, this Stone Matrix asphalt with fibers, is that the same material? Am I going to get that same smooth, or are we doing something different?
It's going to be a different material, but you should have just as smooth. The criteria for that is the same as it is for what we're going to apply.
All right. I'm going to hold you to that.
All right.
All right. My second question is, we just had a study session where we had lots of complaints about the Watson circle, traffic circle there. And what I see is you're going right through that with the pavement preservation.
Is that a hassle?
Is that, well, not only is this a hassle, but the question is, I'm sitting here looking at the other project and wondering, why aren't we including that circle in the other project? And I'm wondering, why would we spend a million or two in sealing it now if we ever think about redesigning that circle to make traffic flow better? So, that's just a question, and I hadn't thought about it until we discussed that circle quite often between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock.
I think the best answer to that question right now is that it's going to be such a long time before we get to that project. Before we get to the paving, I think we're talking about 16 months, give or take, and that's after the project is initiated. So, we're talking about a long time. In the meantime, we're going to lose a lot of quality and a lot in that circle itself. So, regarding the traffic control, it is going to be difficult. Greg and I are working with, and will work with, the contractors on that. It's probably going to be one way, one at a time, so we'll have to do one at a time, which is kind of what we do, but...
Is it possible to get that done before school starts in August? Probably not, huh?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Darn. Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, we needed FY '26 money to get this done, but we did consider that. Like I said, we always do. We need all of the above. We need no other projects to be conflicting. We need school to be minimal impact as much as possible, and then all the other things. We do coordinate with the schools on all circumstances, and we have a good relationship with them. We get first line to their transportation division. So, we'll communicate all of that.
And the one reason that it stopped beyond that roundabout is because that's where the road narrows. So, we took it to where that asphalt changes, where we left off with the roundabout. If it's decided later on to change that roundabout, then that'll be kind of a project in and of itself. So, all right.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2026-045 and move to approve night work.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Item 11B.
Approval of city contract number 2025-142 with Dibble &amp; Associates Consulting Engineers, Inc., for the PFAS remediation study.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Steve Olfer, utilities manager for the city of Prescott. I'm here today to discuss something that we've been waiting for for quite a while. We found PFAS in our water system back in '22. There's been a number of different regulatory moves and several different process moves that we've made to reduce that effect on our citizenry. So, this is our first step in trying to find a way to permanently reduce the PFAS that is in the system and bring back our beloved well 5 at the airport, which has been idle since '22. So, we went through an RSOQ process. Dibble, Inc., won the group, and they have provided us with a scope. I had an opportunity, for those in WIS, to go through the à la carte menu they gave us, which was long and extensive and technical. And this is where we have landed from that, because if we went with everything, Gwen wouldn't let us spend that kind of money. So, we've shaved it down a little bit, but we've got it extremely focused. So, just as a quickie, the PFAS, again, PFAS is in the news, and we've had, these are the fluoridated carbon chains that resist breaking down in the environment. We find them everywhere. Anywhere you look, you find them. And so, our goal here is to try to reduce that level so that we can get to a point where we can run all of our wells without concern. There's over 10,000. I think we've been through a lot of this. Everybody, everywhere contributes PFAS to the system. No matter what you do, no matter what you wear, no matter how you eat your food, you're contributing PFAS. And so, it comes in through all the different ways, and all the rules have been coming out quickly. In '23, we had the maximum contaminant levels set at 4 parts per trillion. Currently, the only well that does not meet that criteria is our airport well 5. Everything else is under that criteria at this point. We've been doing our testing. We're prepared for when the regulations do roll out. Those dates are kind of changing through the administration, but at this point, we have until 2031 to comply. So, we have quite a bit of time. We don't have to rush anything, which is why we've been taking our time doing this. '25, we just had those retractions and the extension of the compliance date. And then, our testing and results, as I said, I've presented several times within WIS, to the levels. We do this about every three months for the Water Issue Subcommittee. And so, plus, we have it all on our website for anybody to look at. We test quarterly, and everything is holding steady at this point. So...
Councilman Gamboge, you had a question?
Steve, how far is well 5 from the next closest well?
Approximately 5, what is it, 4,000 feet, something along those lines. They're both on the north side of the airport. Well 5 is at the end of the runway. Well 3 is over by the hangar complex.
Okay. Any idea why it's just 5 that has the PFAS issue?
Well, that's what we're hoping to find out. That's our goal right here with this study. The group that we hired has a number of subs that do a lot of underground modeling, and we're hoping to find why it's just well 5. So, that's one of our biggest goals. So, within this, we have a number of different scope items.
Sorry to interrupt you again, Steve, but Councilman Montoya had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I have a question. I know we've been involved in litigation related to PFAS and some kind of class actions, although I don't think that's the right word. There's a, is it? Okay. I'm looking at the attorney. He knows better than me. But, is some of the cost for this going to be encompassed in those settlements that we've gotten? I'm just curious.
If I'm correct, I believe we've received one settlement?
Yeah, the answer is yes. And I think thus far, the first tranche we received as part of the settlement was over $500,000.
And so, the answer would be yes. Yes, we are going to use that money to fund this study.
Thank you.
So, what Dibble &amp; Associates has presented to us, we really wanted to focus on the airport. The airport seems to be our biggest issue right now. Chino Valley is perfectly fine with PFAS, so we wanted to take some time with the airport. So, what we're going to do is we're going to look at the distribution system of the airport itself. We have three wells and a couple different tanks and zones and everything. How do we move the water around? Because one of the ways to treat for PFAS is blending, which is what essentially we do at Chino Valley. So, if we can accomplish that in the airport for a much cheaper cost than doing a full-scale treatment, well, we want to go that direction. So, that will be certainly one of the first things we look at. We're going to look at the different treatment alternatives. There's all kinds of different things out there. And when you go through the literature, there's all these bench tests and all these different chemicals that do magic and stuff, and that's great, but it's not going to work for our needs, because we're going to have to be able to treat all of our water at well 5, which is over 5,000 gallons per minute, or about 7 million a day. So, we're going through, looking to try to find something that's a big scale that we can run, because some of these alternatives have big energy costs or need to have huge different staff or technical staff. We just don't really have that here. So, we're looking at the old-school ways of how we're going to treat, how we can do this. And using granular active carbon, or what's called a GAC, or ion exchange are two of the biggies out there. So, those are the two we're going to model and take a look at and see which ones are going to work better for our water and the things within the water. We're also going to look at, what do we do with the stuff after we're done? What are we going to do with the GAC or the ion exchange media? Where does it go? Is it hazardous waste? All those things need to be considered. And then, we're going to look at layouts. How are we going to go about laying this out? Well 5 is luckily out in the middle of nowhere and has plenty of room around it, but if we get into Chino and we have to do well treatment, well, now we're in a kind of a different ballgame there. So, we're going to look at some conceptual layouts and kind of give us an idea of how everything might look. The final report's going to be our PFAS roadmap, and this will give us a compendium of all the different technical memos that Dibble's going to give us, and essentially give us a way to determine, what are we going to do today? What are we going to do in 10 years, and what are we going to do in 50 years? Because there's definitely a possibility that the levels may change. The maximum contaminant levels could change. And if that happens even a little bit, our Chino wells are starting to get to that point. So, we need to have an idea of what we're going to do in the long term as well. So, this will give us that. The vendor's going to do a number of different meetings, workshops, and public meetings. So, they will present to WIS, they can present to the council, they can also do an at-large public meeting. So, we're all discussing different ideas and how we can go about their conclusions. Lastly, our timeline, pretty short. We'll have our first technical memo after 20 weeks, and that will then conclude after 48 weeks. And so, within a year or so, we'll have a nice report that will give us an opportunity to check out what is going on in different areas of the airport. We wanted to do some work in Chino as well, but with the financial constraints, it's much better to focus on the one that's giving us the biggest problem right now. We'll have plenty of time to focus on Chino if things change in that. So, we are asking for your permission to give a contract to Dibble &amp; Associates. Mike Logan and Ezra Page of Dibble are here if you wish to ask questions of them. Otherwise, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Steve. I've been studying this issue pretty extensively over the last couple of years, and especially since it has become such a national challenge. When I was at the Water Users Leadership Forum up in Flagstaff, we had a chance to talk to a number of vendors and people coming forward with possibly new technologies. I think what I heard was this total market is approaching a trillion dollars. So, you have virtually every municipality and every water district and provider has to deal with this, because PFAs are everywhere. But because it's such a huge market, I have a feeling that there's probably going to be some significant technology innovation coming into the market. So, I know that well 5 out there by the airport is a pretty high-volume contributing well. So, being able to find some way to deal with the contamination there and bring it back into the system so that our capacity, at least for the next few years, is going to be adequate while we watch the technology develop. I think we're fortunately in a pretty good condition right now, because the majority of our water coming from our well field in Chino Valley is well below the maximum contamination level. I've also heard that the number of commercial labs throughout the country that can actually test to 4 parts per trillion is very limited. So, the lead time, just to be able to get your test done and results back, is probably likely to continue to expand. How long do you have to wait right now?
Generally, four to six weeks. They have to go to Phoenix.
Yeah. And the more municipalities that start to deal with this, the more demand is going to go on to those testing labs. So, I know ion exchange and activated charcoal, they all produce a contaminated result that then has to be dealt with. I think right now, it's considered to be hazardous waste. So, where does it go? You can't incinerate it, so it's probably going to have to go into some type of a landfill somewhere as contaminated waste. So, we can see that the current scalable options are not great.
No.
But some of the... But some of the new technology, although it's encouraging, it's not yet able to scale up to a very large municipal water provider like us.
Correct.
So that kind of puts us in a rock and a hard place. So I think being able to focus on well five, to be able to bring it back online, and focusing most of the efforts here in that area probably makes some sense. And then we have the luxury of kind of watching as this whole market and the technology develops. So we don't invest in archaic, obsolete technology and find out three or four years from now, all our efforts are obsolete. So I think being able to kind of keep it limited and focusing on well five, finding a way to bring that back into the capacity for our system while we watch the technology develop. And hopefully, there's going to be an innovative approach that's scalable, doesn't require massive, complex and frequent monitoring is probably where we're going to end up. So other than that, I don't have any comments.
We're also
Thank you.
We're also very fortunate that two of our neighboring jurisdictions are ahead of us in developing their own. And so we'll be able to learn a lot from what they do.
Yeah, I don't like reinventing the wheel either. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. You didn't really mention what the current parts per million is at well five. You mentioned what's allowed for, but what is it currently at well five?
Currently, it is sitting at 15 parts per trillion.
Wow, okay. That's just helpful information, I think, for us to know. Is that why it makes it so you can't blend it because it's just too high to blend with the other wells at the airport?
The distribution system at the airport is not compatible for blending. We don't have any tanks out there, and the distribution system is incomplete for us to be able to blend.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from council? Do we have any public comment on this one?
We do not, Mayor.
Well, I wish you great luck and a successful project. I know well five contributes quite a capacity, so bringing it back online is going to be important.
Very much so. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion here.
This is Mayor. I move to approve city contract number 2025-142.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, we're moving on to item 11C.
Approval of city contract number 2026-047 with Hawk Contracting LLC for the construction of the Bradshaw Drive guardrail installation project.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works Capital Program Manager. And I'll reiterate what Janet said, it's nice to present to a full room. Bradshaw Drive is classified as a minor collector in City Prescott. I don't see our map getting pulled up. But if you're familiar with it, Bradshaw Drive comes off of Gurley Street, goes somewhat east, southeast bound, goes up, curls up the hill and goes up to the residential areas up there. Kim Lee Horn conducted a roadside barrier analysis, which recommended installation of guardrail in that area. Kim Lee Horn completed the plans and bid documents to construct improvements to Bradshaw Drive to increase safety along this section between Goodwin Street and Jacob Lane. The improvements include guardrail installation, delineators, signing, marking, and asphalt pavement shoulders. Invitation for bids was publicly noticed on May 18th and 25th of last year, I'm sorry, of '25. On June 18th, we opened two bids. Hawk Contracting LLC of Tempe, Arizona was the low bidder at $494,444. Engineering estimate for the project was $406,322.50. So we came in about 22% over the engineer's estimate for this. City has received written confirmation of the bid from Hawk Contracting. Verification of their license, bonding, insurance, references, and performance of past municipal projects has been performed, and Public Works is recommending award of the contract to Hawk LLC. Funding is budgeted and available in Public Works Department FY26 Streets Fund Budget, and the city's standard contract for construction services will be used for this project. The contract will be for approximately 45 days. If we start with a notice to proceed at the end of July, we'd be looking at about September 15th completion date. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I know the engineering estimates are always based upon retrospective analysis of previous contracts, and we still have a very elevated number of components of jobs like this. Any steel, rebar, those are still way up. Concrete, all of that are up maybe 30, 40, 50% over just two years ago. We're starting to see some flattening on lumber and things like that, but there's not going to be a whole lot of lumber here.
In reviewing this bid, the guardrail price itself was pretty much right on the money. The bidders came in right there, but like the in-treatments were significantly higher by the bidders than it was in the engineering estimate. So the different items, like I said, sometimes we don't capture everything exactly where we want to in an estimate, but the bidders tell us what the prices are.
Well, I mean, even looking at the two bids that came in, this 494 is, what, 30,000 below the next?
Correct. About 28,000 lower than the second lowest bidder. So they were fairly competitive bids for the price.
And I'm encouraged that we're starting to see some bidders that are coming up from the valley to be interested in some of these projects. So that helps with having a competitive marketplace and be able to get good work at a good cost.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Moore?
Sorry, real quick. Tim, your staff did not put a map in, so my staff just did it. Do you need IT to pull it up?
If council would like to see the approximate location of the project?
Drumroll, please. You betcha.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, guys. So as you can see, this is the location here, just above Goodwin Street going up Bradshaw Drive. Just below the new subdivision that's up there, the guardrail will consist around the outside turn if you're coming up the hill, as well as the outside turn going down the hill. And also, one of the components of the project is adding some asphalt shoulder to widen the road a little bit. Right now, it's fairly narrow. One of the things we've heard about is school buses as they're traversing that up there. Their rear wheels have a tendency to cross over the double yellow, not significantly, but enough that it's a safety concern. So we're widening the shoulders here to get a little more drivable surface so we won't have larger vehicles tracking over the center line.
Yeah, especially during bad weather.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm real familiar with that area because I lived on that side of town for about 15 years, over 30 years ago. But I guess my question is, that road's been in place for 40, 50 years, and so I guess the question is, why now? Have there been accidents? Are there warrants that are making this necessary? Or is just the timing is, let's do this? I'm just curious, why now?
I believe, like I said, I believe it was brought up as a concern to Ian Mattingly, our traffic engineer. And then, like I said, then we employed Kim Lee Horn to do a study and look at it, and guardrail was recommended at that location.
Okay, I was just curious.
Mayor Protam, can you tell me?
Thank you. Tim, I frequent that road myself. My sister-in-law lives at the top of that hill, and it is so dangerous. In fact, we don't let the first-time drivers drive it, especially in the winter. Is that guardrail sized and engineered to stop, let's say, a pickup truck or something going down that? Will it actually stop it? I mean, I know it has something to do with the size of the posts and the embedment.
Guardrails aren't necessarily designed to stop a vehicle, but it's designed to help dissipate the impact. So it may not, as it first hits, it may not stop directly where it hits and may go down. If you look, see in an accident where a guardrail has been kind of folded up and crumpled, it helps dissipate the energy created by an impact, but it's not necessarily to stop you right at the point of impact. There's a lot of factors there, depending how fast you're going, et cetera.
Isn't there a home being built right on that curve, too, now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if that had something to do with it. That looks like a massive concrete thing, but I was wondering if that was going to stop anybody if they slipped down that road.
I mean, where the house is being constructed is near the very top of the hill. I would say the corner that's the trickiest to navigate is the lower one, especially coming down the hill because you've already made that right turn and you're entering into a left-hand turn movement. Near the top of the hill, as you're coming up the hill, I wouldn't anticipate that would be as dangerous or as impactful.
Yeah, I'm very happy to see that. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion then. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay.
I move to approve city contract number 2026047.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Please vote.
Councilman Moore, can you vote, please? Thank you. Pass the 7-0.
Okay, item 11D.
All right.
Public hearing and approval of the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and First Year Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael McInnes with Community Development Department. I am your Community Development Block Grant Coordinator here with the city. On this presentation, we're talking about our 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, which includes the First Year Annual Action Plan. The annual action plan has the applicants that have applied for CDBG funding this year, the funding recommendations of our CAC committee. Okay. So what is the consolidated plan? Well, it's a federal requirement for communities receiving CDBG funds, a CDBG being a HUD program. It's really a strategic plan, works as a guide for future annual action plans that come forward to council over the next five years. Really, why now? Well, our consolidated plan for 2020 to 2024 has expired, June 30th, so just a few days ago. HUD gives us a bit of a window to submit the next plan, and we're within that window right now. Again, this new plan is required to continue the city's CDBG program, which is now in its 21st year. So we've been doing this for a while. Big note, important note of the CDBG program, it is primarily to benefit low and moderate-income residents of Prescott and Prescott only. This slide, just some past recipients of CDBG funds over the last 20 years. This isn't everybody, but some of the big ones. Going to highlight just a couple. U.S. Vets, for sure, especially as of late. It took us a while to get here, but a big CDBG funding project at the VA campus, funding their officer quarters, I think it took like three to four years to get finally here. About $120,000, that should be completed within, hopefully, the next couple of months, our portion of the funding of that project. Prescott Chamber Commerce Foundation and their executive director, Ms. Sherry Heine, we've established a great relationship with the Chamber over the years. They help administer our minor home repair program that's been very successful. And so, just noting a few up there. Okay? All right. The next couple of slides, going to talk specifically about the consolidated plan. It was a big document, really bulky, clunky. The reason for that, this is a HUD document. So there's a lot of data in there, and I'm going to try to really, you know, focus on the big issues, right? So there's a public input process to this consolidated plan. It all really starts and ends with the Citizen Advisory Committee, or the CAC. That's a seven-member committee selected by the council. They've been meeting once a month, lot of hard work on this plan. Also on top of that, we're very fortunate this year to have a housing needs assessment completed by an outside consulting firm, Elliott Pollock and Company. That was actually paid for by a grant, another grant, so that was free for us, for the city. Elliott Pollock and Company was the consulting firm. We've had community workshops, stakeholder meetings, lot of correlation or working with our Workforce Housing Committee and what they're doing, a lot of what their priorities and goals are, really kind of mesh with what is in this consolidated plan. This is the end of a 30-day public comment period. We haven't received any public comment as of yet, not too unusual for a consolidated plan. But if there is any received today at the end of this public hearing, that would be included in the consolidated plan. The community needs identified, this isn't all of them, but these are the top three, really not too surprising, okay? Housing affordability, a big issue. The data comes back with about 30% of households here in Prescott are cost burden, meaning that the cost of their houses, the cost of housing costs is over 30%. Servicing our aging population continues to be a need that's growing and growing. There's a lot of, in public, I guess, engagement, focus on transportation. And emergency shelters and transitional housing was another top need. We see that through the Agape House, again, the U.S. Vets and what they're doing. Finishing out the consolidated plan, the big priorities coming from the CAC. Housing rehabilitation, accessibility improvements. This is continuing the city's successful minor home repair program, projects improving public facilities and infrastructure. Gave some examples of doing work at the Adult Center, the Community Nature Center, as well as neighborhood revitalization projects, for example, possibly in the Dexter neighborhood. Central services and transportation, meals and health services, emergency shelter and transitional housing support, and also economic development and job creation. Looking specifically at this year, this is what HUD has allocated to the city of Prescott CDBG program, $275,024. It's allocated in the following breakdown, 15% cap to public service, administration, in-house administration at 20%, the rest towards construction. HUD really wants with this program to go to infrastructure projects. Okay. Our five-year CDBG projection with this plan is 1.375 million. How did I come up with that? Just 275 times five. Yep, might be. So, no general fund impact, 100% federal funding. This is a program, as really, you know, as federal programs go, this is the taxpayers' money coming back into our local community, so. Okay. Showing this graph every year, kind of shows how much we've been getting, the trend of CDBG money. Last couple of years, there's actually been a bit of an increase. And looking at the CAC's recommendations for this year, these are the construction projects. We actually had more construction project applicants this year than any year I've been here, more than public service applicants. And on the slide top, I'll just list out some of them. Parks and Rec, an ADA-compliant restaurant
I have a question, Michael.
Yes, Mayor.
How does the federal government determine how much local CDBG programs are going to be funded? Is that based upon population and/or the population of low and moderate components of that overall population?
That's correct, Mayor. What you said is, they have a formula, they use that data, as you're saying, to come to their final amount. Why is it more? Why is it less each year? You know, the budget hasn't changed. For CDBG, it's about 3.3 billion. And really, what changed it is more communities either coming on board to this program or not participating in the program anymore. So Prescott Valley has a CDBG program now. They received about $292,000 in their first year. Imagine, because they're a little bit bigger of a population than us.
Councilman Moore, your question?
Yeah, you just said that the funding hasn't really decreased. I was just wondering, with the new big, beautiful bill, if there's any risk of the funding going down in the future?
It didn't, it wasn't in there.
Okay. So So we can anticipate we're going to get similar amounts?
Right. It's the 3.3 billion HUD didn't get touched in the bill. At least, this program did not. On both sides of the aisle, it's a pretty popular program because it's so local, you know, the money seems to really help at a local level, so.
I have one additional question. Recently, Chelsea and Councilman Grady and I met with some constituents in the community that are in the situation of a housing affordability crisis, particularly seniors that find themselves on a fixed income. And they're in some of the facilities that were built originally for low-income individuals. And they're in some of the facilities that were built originally for low-income individuals, but those facilities only have to stay in that classification for like 20 years, and then they can go to the general market pricing. And I know that you've mentioned that this funding is, they prefer to do infrastructure, but I was wondering if there's any way that CDBG funds can be used for the housing affordability crisis for seniors in our community that are being priced out of their homes because they can no longer afford on their fixed income to stay where they're living because they're renting, and those rents go up every year, and then eventually it's going to go to free market?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. Yes, the issue with some of these senior centers or senior living facilities that are changing the market rate, and that's been increasing. CDBG can be used for rental assistance to a level. We actually have a program in effect right now through our old COVID money, that's CDBG, that's rental assistance for these kind of situations, if any seniors are finding themselves in that situation.
But that's only for one year, right?
Oh, it's limited. Again, CDBG, six months with that COVID CDBG money, regular CDBG, they only allow three months, so. We're still looking at, we're researching, it's been brought to our attention, and we're spending time looking for solutions.
Thank you.
Councilman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, so I noticed that in the priorities for 2025 through 2029, the last one was economic development and job creation. Do you, none of these projects recommended for this next fiscal year kind of fall in that category? But do you have some ideas, or did the CAC have some ideas of what opportunities might present in the future?
Yes, thank you, Councilman, for that question. There have been projects in the past that are job mentorship programs. We did not see any this year. We might in the future, for sure. The one thing we did with this consolidated plan was leave it as flexible as possible. We checked all the boxes, anything that comes to the council that, you know, fits with the CDBG goals and priorities will be able to do, and that's definitely a piece of it.
Thank you.
So the construction projects, and then here were our public service activity projects.
Mayor Protem had a question for you, Michael.
Real quick, back on that, some of the, you know, complexes here that are now turning over from the 20-year, I think the public would be interested to know that some of those programs now have increased that. So if you have an apartment like that one was, and they fit the bill or the qualifications as a senior living home, and they take that government funding, they were only meant to be able to keep it at that reduced rate for 20 years. They've just recently raised that to 30. Now, it's not retroactive, so those private owners can do what they want. But we have two complexes like that. We've got some in the Bradshaw, as you know, and Canyon Run is another one. And it is a very sad situation where they've displaced a lot of, a lot of the seniors that were in there on a fixed income. They can't, they can't afford the market rate. So we were talking about that in the Workforce Housing Committee as well. There's a program, Lytech, they've just increased it to 30. So while we're crafting the workforce housing policy, we're looking at attaching that 30-year requirement to some of the money as well. So, thank you.
All right, and these are the public service recommendations from CAC. Any questions or go into further detail on any of the recommended projects? Yeah?
No, I just want to congratulate you, Michael. I know a few years back, I was being a little critical because it seemed like the same people, the same organizations always came in every single year for funding, to the extent that I think they were actually planning as part of their budget, that they were always going to get an award. So being able to widen the number of applicants so more projects and more opportunities would be available for other organizations in the community, I think you're achieving that here.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. And that ends my presentation.
Any other comments from the council? Any public comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, we have several.
Okay.
Shay Richland.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and staff.
Ma'am, can you please pull the microphone down and speak into it? Thank you.
Okay. I'm here today with some of my neighbors from the Bradshaw Senior Committee, Community, so that we may be seen, so that you can hear our stories, and hopefully be moved to take any and all possible steps to find a way to help us. Show that the Prescott leadership cares about all of its residents, especially its most vulnerable. I've lived in Arizona for over 50 years and Prescott for 30. At the age of 16, I had my first real job. I put myself through college, taking eight years to graduate because I had to work full-time, going to school part-time, raise my daughter, and had sometimes a single parent. During my work life, I have held management and marketing positions and been self-employed. I've also volunteered most of my adult life. An unexpected illness significantly interrupted my entire life, precluding my ability to adequately prepare financially for retirement. This chronic health challenge has necessitated my living on a small security fixed income, and now I face a very uncertain future. A 2% COLA increase can't begin to cover 10% yearly rent increases, rising food, medical care, and insurance costs, especially while being rent overburdened, which has already been addressed. Here's a statistic. Every $100 increase in median rent is associated with a 9% increase in the homelessness rate. That does not bode well for Prescott. The Bradshaws don't even offer a 30% option, studio apartments are non-existent, and one-bedrooms are highly sought after due to their scarcity. Roughly 80 to 90% of residents are women. Why is this significant? Because although women tend to live longer than men, they are also paid less throughout their work lives, have less opportunity for well-paying jobs, and perform unpaid work in the form of raising families. So adequately preparing for retirement may be difficult, if not impossible. And that's if no health challenges occur complicating the life further. My neighbors have shared with me how they came to reside at the Bradshaws. They too have worked most of their lives, raised family, and had life throw them one or more curveballs. They are receiving little, if any, help from family and friends. And by the way, the Chamber funds, nobody's getting a call back from them. So because of no fault of our own, we find ourselves caught up in a negative social factors, and now an extensive affordable low-income housing crisis. Life is incredibly hard for many grandmas and grandpas without living in constant fear that the rent increase will put them living on the streets of Prescott or in their cars. It has already happened at Canyon Run, and the Bradshaws are a similar property. Here's my comment or request. Because affordable low-income housing for seniors is a current crisis, I would like to see most of the CDBG funds utilized for immediate rent relief for seniors in low-income housing. I would ask that any expenditure which does not address this crisis directly should be put on hold. I ask this because a crisis calls for immediate, bold, and creative action, demands people come together thinking of outside-the-box solutions. This problem is not going away, and there are lots of seniors in Prescott. It cannot be ignored or kicked down the road.
You have 30 seconds, please wrap up.
All righty. Then, now you just lost my train of thought. So one of our mayors has declared a state of an emergency, and I think that's the kind of bold mode that needs to be done. So what's the alternative? I've been told recently that low-income seniors living on the street in Phoenix are being accosted. Is that what we want for Prescott, everybody's hometown?
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Thank you all.
I believe it's Sandra Hammond.
Yeah, keep in mind that you have three minutes to make your comments, so focus those on the actual concerns you have, maybe not your resume. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for having us, Mayor and Council members, and thank you, Councilman Moore, for what you said about housing. I'm one of the residents of Bradshaw Senior Living, and I'm in a situation where I'm absolutely terrified because rent has gone up. I've lived there for a little over two years, and I moved in because it's senior living. And they, the rentals there go at 60%, 40, 60%, 50%, 30%, 30%, excuse me. I have never done this before, so I'm a little nervous of the going rate. And my rent has gone up three times in two years. And the day I moved in, the rent went up the very next day. I am now priced out of Bradshaw Senior Living, but I'm still living there because I don't know where to go. I have family that's lived here for 40 years, raised a family here. And my older brother, who's part of that family, has Parkinson's now, and they are in a bit of a pickle themselves, so there is no help from my family there. God bless them, but there isn't. And I want to help them, actually. I moved here nine years ago from Marin County, California, to help my mother, who was 90 years old, and she could no longer hear me on the phone. And I knew I had to move. I loved where I lived. It was great weather, a lot of water. And I came for her, and I'm very glad I did. And I realized I had my own business as an executive recruiter, and I was getting older. I'm 75 now, so when I moved here, I had to retire from that. I couldn't do it anymore and be with her. And I had made one bad decision with the home I owned in Marin County that crippled my retirement funds. And so here I am in this pickle, and I am terrified. I'm, I have a big dog. I love where I live now. I have friends there, they're sweet and lovely people, and it's my sanctuary, me and my pup. And I don't know where to go. I cannot face the idea of homelessness. I really can't face it. And I've looked and looked and looked, and there's nothing. There's absolutely nothing. I have had help as the rent's gone up from the churches here, and God bless those people.
Please wrap up, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. This is a devastating problem, and I hope there's some help for us because what do you do? I have long COVID and a heart issue, and the thought of moving all my things, and I don't have the money to have movers come in and pack me. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. I just hope I can make it through this month with the high rate. Thank you very much.
Judith Reynolds.
Mayor and Council members, my story is pretty much the same as theirs. I moved out here 11 years ago from Kansas City and lived with my daughter in Prescott Valley for seven years before I got into the Bradshaw. I love living at the Bradshaws, and they're very nice, it's a very nice community. We help each other. We've all become like a family, which is scary sometimes. But I tell you, it's a wonderful place to live. I just don't know where else I would go. And the same with others. And I try to help others when I can, and I do help others. But my rent has gone up three times in the last two years, and it didn't go up a small amount. It went up considerably. And my Social Security goes up every year, but very miniscule in comparison to what my rent and utilities and cost of living has gone up. And I find that I'm struggling now. Well, I have to be a little more frugal. That wouldn't kill me to be a little more frugal, but some people can't be more frugal. They don't have anything to be frugal with. So we want you to take all of that into consideration, that we're a good community, we help each other. We, you know, I don't, I could move back to Kansas City where I can have more affordable living. I've got nieces and nephews, say you can come and live with us. But then there's the expense of moving. How would I get back, you know? And I have a daughter and that's getting married in a couple of weeks, and they have a room in their basement, but I don't want to live in a room. I like to sew, and anybody that sews, no, you got to have some room. And I just like where I live. It's a lovely community, and please do what you can to save us. Thank you.
I believe it's Laureen Peterson.
Good evening. Yes, I'm like the rest. I'm from, I lived in Flagstaff for many years, and I was in a really bad, horrible car accident, and I was the only one that lived out of five people. And I just turned 84 a couple of days ago, and I'm having the same problem. The rent keeps going up almost close to $100 every time, so I've been there three years. And I'm the same way. When I got out of the hospital, I got home, the news had said I had died, so that left me homeless. I was on the streets for about a year. The police used to take me in once in a while, put me in a motel. And I got three sons, they're all Marines. And my husband passed away young, so I left to raise them. So here I am. I finally got me an apartment, but the rent keeps going up, and I don't know how long I can stay, another year maybe, and then I've got to go back on the streets again. So I hope you guys can help us because we really are in need. Thank you.
Linda Larson.
Hello, I'm Linda Larson. I'm originally from South Dakota and have moved to Arizona because my disability was aggravated by the weather there. I was injured in a job in 1985 and struggled financially ever since. In 2002, I was helped by my family in relocating to Prescott. I love Prescott, and I hope to live here the rest of my life. I rented a small house for 19 years and happily lived there until my landlord sold the property. And I was abducted by the new owner. I only had 30 days to find another place to live and move my things out. That didn't happen. Nothing went right, and I was homeless for nearly a year before I was accepted at Bradshaw. I had no other option but to sign a lease that I found out later was not run by HUD Low Income Housing, but also run by a corporation named West Cap. The lease was not a normal one-year lease, but it allowed any, excuse me, it allowed any increase at any time they wanted, leaving me at their mercy. And I did not get any mercy. This year, I was told that HUD lowered my income $5 per month, but then shortly after, West Cap increased my rent to $68 per month, which altogether is half my income. My disability has taken my ability to work, even a part-time job. I've struggled all my adult life. Please help me with the rent increase so I can have enough money for groceries. Thank you.
Dana Pastor. That's all, Mayor.
It's a very, very difficult situation. And finding some way for governments to step in and find a solution, I think, is one of the things we're working on the Workforce Housing Committee to do. CDBG funds are, have a lot of limitations and a lot of restrictions as far as how much and how long they can be allocated to conditions like this. So I don't know what the answer is, but I wish we had one. I'll entertain a motion on your consolidated plan. Mr. [inaudible]. Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and move to approve 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and First Year Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Well, let's do one at a time. So you're going to second the close the public hearing. So all in favor, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Okay, now we can go to the second step. Councilwoman Gamboji included that in his first statement. I guess we have one movement. We just need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and the First Year Annual Action Plan. Please vote.
Pass the 6-1.
Right. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we'll go to item 11E.
FNP 25-001, a final plat for Senator Cottage's 37-unit subdivision on an approximate 11-acre parcel generally located off of Senator Highway on the old drive-in property and a water service application. Site zoning is SF9, location is APN 110-06-002F. Property owner, RCJ Irrevocable Trust, applicant, Lion Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tammy Newick, community planner. I'm here to answer any questions that you have in regards to this final plat.
So naturally, I assume it's in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any questions or concerns from the council? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do. Ron, I guess, or Sue Tatar.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, good, and council members. After what I've just heard, this seems like it's a little self-involved. But anyway, we live right off Senator Highway, and what used to be a windy mountain road leading to Goldwater Lake, hiking trails, small communities and off-road trails in the past seven years has become an issue of traffic increase and speed increases and is no longer the road we found seven years ago. Now we have Yavapai College with its residence increases out there and classrooms. We have a new development in Groom Creek, 30 lots going in there. We have the neighborhood right by us at the old drive-in, 37 units, 30 units in Groom Creek, and all other things. That's going to be another 140 cars up and down that road every day, more than one trip most of it. And my question, it's a, this is a comment, I have a query. Have you addressed the traffic issues there? Has this been solved? Is there going to be a light? What is going to happen? Because crossing from Hazely over Senator, back and forth, there's been an accident where the church was already. The traffic increase and the speed increases on that road are making it very, very dangerous for people in the communities that are building and that have been built there. I just, do you, has that been solved?
Tammy, was there a traffic study done for this project?
I believe there was one with the preliminary plat to address any off-site requirements for improvements. I can't give you any details. I wasn't ready for that at this point. But if there was one required, it would have been done at the preliminary plat stage when this came forward to you. So right now, we're just looking at the final plat to make sure it was in compliance with what you approved as the preliminary plat.
And each one of these projects are looked at as an individual project. So with 37 units, you're probably looking at maybe 40 cars, something like that. So that doesn't itself have a big impact.
Correct.
It looks like there's one way in and one way out, or they were sprinkled.
I believe they will be. They do have a secondary emergency into Hazely.
I think that's one of those sections here on the map. Each one's is track A.
Yeah, it goes over to the subdivision to the south. That was, it was plotted, as you can see here, yeah, track A, the second one to the, I guess, I can use this. This one right here goes over to what was recorded with the subdivision as a emergency or secondary access, emergency access.
So that'll be kept open.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Scott Lyon, Lion Engineering. The emergency access will have a gate across it. It won't be used for everyday access at all, just emergency purposes. And primary access will be off of the Senator Highway. As a part of that, there is a left turn lane that will be improved on Senator Highway for the northbound traffic, southbound traffic, excuse me.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
That's exactly what I was about to say. I remember the left turn lane. And so that was the concern with your home, being able to accelerate and get safely onto the highway, onto the Senator Highway. But I do think, you know, just to answer the question that was brought from the public, it's not the combination of just this, this lot. It's the combination of lots of things going on. And I, I don't know if this is something we could do because I find this in substantial compliance. So, but if we could ask PP-TAC to take a look at Senator Highway and see if, if it's time to take a look at what we're doing to slow down the traffic there. That's my only response to the question from the audience.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
You know, I'm going to echo that. I live right around the corner from here, and this is the street that goes right down our iconic street of Mount Vernon. And I think as we start to approve all these developments that are up, heading up that road there, we, I think we, it's time, and I know it's not your problem, but I think we probably should talk to Ian Mattingly about doing a study. We need to do some traffic calming on that street because you have a grade coming down from the top. And as you get into Mount Vernon, the people or the drivers are expected to slow down because now you're entering into a residential area that has walkers. And we've had, you know, just recently, even somebody killed in that area there.
Thanks, Mayor. If I may just interject for a second, I think we may be off topic.
Yeah, we are.
To the extent that that's something the council's interested in doing, we can certainly look to put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to really do that. I think this is a, this begs that.
Yeah. But I think as, as you all know, the land development code, legal standard for approval of a final plat is whether or not it's.
Substantial conformance with the preliminary plat.
And that's the decision you're looking to make today.
Thank you.
So with that reminder, I'll entertain a motion for approval on this.
Move to approve FNP 25-001.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Okay, now the item you've all been waiting for.
HP 25-004, continuation of an appeal with updated design for review and discussion related to the proposed demolition of an existing building and construction of a 47-room, four-story boutique hotel, Prescott Plaza Hotel. Location, 136138 and 140 South Montezuma Street, APN 109-02-014A. Zoning, DTB Historic Preservation District Number One, Courthouse Plaza. Applicant and owner, Jim Grissette, architect Doug Stroh.
Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Council. I haven't had the opportunity to formally meet all of you yet, but my name is Alex Bramlett, and I'm the new planning manager here for the City of Prescott Planning and Zoning Division. So thank you all for your time here this afternoon as we review and discuss the continuation of an appeal for the Prescott Plaza Hotel, which is now a proposed 47-room hotel off of 136138 and 140 South Montezuma Street. So I'd like to take just a few minutes to discuss kind of how we got to this point today. So this proposal has been through the Prescott Preservation Commission, or PPC. It's gone through two study sessions. The first one happened in 2022. The second study session happened in 2003, and then following that study session, they went to a PPC voting session on July 14, 2023, where, as we are familiar, the PPC voted unanimously to deny the proposal 7-0. Following that, the applicant appealed the PPC's denial to city council, and it appeared before you all on a voting session on March 26, 2024, where at that time, you all upheld the PPC's denial. So since then, the applicant has revised the design, and they are here before you to do the continuation of the appeal. And so I want to also just note that in addition to this process, they also still will need to go through a special use permit due to the size of the structure. And that process in and of itself will be going through a courtesy review with the Preservation Commission. They'll have to go through Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the P and Z will be referring an approval to you all or a recommendation and then for final consideration. So just want to highlight some of the changes that you'll see in the proposal since this was last brought to you. The applicant has reduced the total number of stories from five to four stories. So they lowered the building height by doing so. So the top of the fourth floor parapet is 43 feet 6 inches, and then the total height of the structure is the top of the elevator overrun, which is 48 feet. The rooftop terrace was moved to the fourth floor, and I'll show more visuals later. They also added in Juliet balconies to the middle of the second and third stories, and they removed the sandstone frieze and banding from the front facade. They also did a window and entry reconfiguration at the sidewalk level, which you can see modified. So here is the alley perspective, just going to go through some renderings. The balconies there, you can see the Juliet ones as well, again, in the center on the upper floors. This is the fourth floor terrace. Again, you can tell, well, I'm going to actually get to this one right here. So this is more of a graphic design. The lot itself is 50 feet wide and 150 feet deep. So you can see again, that fourth floor, the top of parapet is at 43 feet and 6 inches, and then the little bit above that is the 40 feet, 48 feet for the elevator overrun. Just to go through some kind of perspective shots for you, this is looking northeast, just to give you a visual and a sense of kind of what this looks and feels like in the perspective of the Whiskey Row itself. And just another shot, different visual, looking southeast for more perspective. So moving forward, we have outlined here just a few options for council to consider today. The first being to schedule this for a different voting session at a future date. Another option is to reverse the findings, which would in turn approve the proposal. Or the third potential option would be to affirm the findings, which would be denying the proposal. And I know that the applicant, Jim Grissette, and his representative, John Riches, are here and available to speak on this topic today as well. That's what I have for you so far.
Thank you for that. I think the next step here is to listen to the applicant and/or the representative. And I just want the public to know whenever there's an appeal of this nature, it is looked at as almost a new application because the design has changed significantly, and it's addressed some of the previous concerns on the design that led to the denial in the Prescott Preservation Commission and that what we heard after that. So please proceed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Riches. I'm the vice president for litigation at the Goldwater Institute. I feel particularly honored to be representing an organization that carries Barry Goldwater's name. I know this city was immensely important to him, as was the greatest state in our great country. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Jim Grissette. He is the property owner at 136 to 140 South Montezumo Street. And like every resident, every one of the 50,000 residents in this city and every property owner in this great city, Mr. Grissette has a right to lawfully use his property and to develop it. He wants to replace an aging, underused structure with a boutique hotel that would serve the community, boost tourism, and bring renewed vitality to Whiskey Row. There's three brief points I'd like to make. The first is that since this proposal was originally submitted, Mr. Grissette has made substantial changes to the project. He listened to the Historic Preservation Commission. He listened to public feedback. He made thoughtful, meaningful changes to his design to address those concerns. He didn't propose some generic hotel project. He invested his time, his passion into making a plan that fits this community's, this community's unique identity. The second point I'd like to make is what the law requires. The Arizona Legislature passed what's known as the Permit Freedom Act, and this is codified at Arizona Revised Statute 9-843. And what that law does and requires of municipal governments is two things. The first is that when a council is considering a permit or a licensing application, it has to base the adoption or denial of that permit on clear and specific criteria. It can't rely on vague and subjective criteria in determining whether to grant or deny a permit. The second thing the law requires is that once a application is submitted, local governments, including this city, have 60 days to act on the application. So those are the two changes in state law. Now, when this project was first submitted, we had sent a letter on behalf of Mr. Grissette to the council because it was our view that the original denial was not based on the clear and unambiguous criteria that state law requires. Instead, it was based on subjective items like mass and scaling that didn't exist in state law or in city code. And in our view, that's precisely the type of arbitrary criteria that state law forbids and is an infringement on property rights for all citizens in this city. The final point I want to make, yesterday I was walking around the plaza, and I was walking by the courthouse, and I looked up at the courthouse, and that, that's where Barry Goldwater launched his 1964 presidential campaign. And Barry Goldwater, Senator Goldwater, understood the importance of private property rights. He understood the importance of the rule of law, the requirement with, when the government acts on something, it has to do that under clear rules that all of our citizens understand. And he understood that markets and the community, not central planners, are best equipped to determine how property can and should be put to its highest and best use. Every citizen in this city, including Mr. Grissette, deserves clarity. They deserve consistency. They should be able to invest in their property with confidence. They should be able to know what the rules are upfront. And when the rules are vague or they're made up along the way, it invites uncertainty. It undermines trust in our government, and it can expose the city to legal liability. In this case, there is simply no lawful criteria that would authorize a denial of this application. Mr. Grissette, again, resubmitted his completely redesigned application on June 16. That means under the law, the city has to act on that application by August 15. That's 60 days after the submittal. Otherwise, there is a substantial risk of liability. Mr. Grissette has worked with the city. He made changes to this project that the law did not even require him to do. He's simply asking to exercise his rights as a property owner to invest in this community, to improve this community, and to contribute to the future of Prescott. I respectfully urge the council today. to the future of Prescott. I respectfully urge the council today to adopt Mr. Grissette's proposal, to adopt it under item 2, and make this very wonderful project a reality. Thank you very much.
Questions or concerns? Councilman Montoya?
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney, Deputy City Attorney. Matt, can you give me a better understanding of, he said, the gentleman who's just speaking said, "We're required to act within 60 days." What does that mean exactly? Like, what defines action?
Yeah, I don't know if it's something that's been litigated at this point. An action will be a denial. An action will be an approval. Whether or not an action to continue the matter is an action, we can hear from Mr. Riches if he has a thought on that. But there's, I don't know if that's ever been kind of contemplated.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a very bold statement that might not be appreciated by some people, but I can remember when we were having this discussion last year, and there was a lot of public dissent, and there was a lot of pushback by Mr. Grissette, and he more than once said, "This is my gift to the city. I'm giving this to the city. This is my gift to the city." And I'd like to propose that if Mr. Grissette wants to give a gift to the city, build some affordable housing for our seniors that are in a housing crisis.
Okay, okay, come on. You know, I require decorum here, so I understand your appreciation here, but let's keep it to civil nature. Well, I know we have a state historical preservation organization that has adopted certain guidelines. Our own Historic Preservation Commission has adopted some of those guidelines, but I think the point here is that the applicant is challenging those guidelines to say they're not actual statute, and they're not adopted in our land development code to be able to be clear and unambiguous. City Attorney, is that kind of my assessment?
Yeah, I think it's more that the argument, at least at this point, from the developer through his attorney, is that the guidelines in the preservation, guidelines, let me just read the statute. This is ARS 9843A. "Notwithstanding any other law, if a municipality requires a license or permit for any free speech or assembly activity, or any activity that changes the use, appearance, or density of a structure or land, the municipality shall specify in clear and unambiguous language that the criteria for granting such, or granting the license or permit." So the argument I think they're making is the preservation guidelines are not clear and unambiguous. Now, the city, through its city code, has adopted an ordinance or a law that deals with the duties of the Preservation Commission, and one of the duties under Subpart B is to review and approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove plans to remodel, demolish, move, or change the exterior appearance of any existing building within an established district, and review plans to construct any new building, structure, or sign in an established district. And the final sentence of that says, "The design criteria of the district shall be used as a guideline for the decisions." And I think the Goldwater Institute's argument and Mr. Grissette's argument is that those particular guidelines are not clear and unambiguous. That's, of course, debatable.
So we seem to have a conflict between what our Historic Preservation Commission expects from a development within that district, and what this statute is trying to say has to be clear and unambiguous. But I think localities that have such a historical character seem to have the, or at least should have the right, to be able to protect that character. And I appreciate private property rights probably more than almost anyone. I think it was one of the foundational principles of our constitution. I've always said that at the time the Declaration of Independence was written, those unalienable rights included life, liberty, and originally it was considered property, because we knew that the royal kings and other rulers in the world didn't allow anyone to own property unless they were part of royalty. So I think it's, we have to value those property rights, but we have to balance those with those cities and communities that have very historical parts of their community. And if private property rights supersede that, then you can end up with a Burger King and a Taco Bell on every corner, and you're trying to say, "Come to our city and enjoy the historical nature of it. So we'll give you a really old So I think we have an obligation to try to balance those two within the legal parameters that we're being asked to make a decision about. Now, I think when we were given this packet, we had kind of a generalized summary of what the Historical Preservation Commission was contemplating when they put this in front of us. And it was my understanding that we could have had a more detailed analysis for us to make a decision about, but that wasn't provided. So I, for one, would like to be able to see that detailed analysis before we have to be making a final decision, because I know there is liability here for the city depending on what decision we make.
Yeah, you know, there's just a natural tension between private property rights and historic districts. And fortunately for you all, you're in the middle of it right now to kind of parse that out.
Boy, are we. Yeah. Councilman Gambogi, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. This has, like many of our other initiatives before council, has gone from an objective analysis to emotion. I think it's not a black and white issue. There's interpretation available here. And I think the Prescott Preservation Commission has done a good job, because there's been modification after modification by Mr. Grissette. The question, and we need to stay away from these slippery slope arguments that if this happens, something bad will happen. This is a good-looking property that would enhance downtown. So let's keep the discussion objective and not extrapolate the worst-case scenarios.
Any other comments or concerns? Mayor Protem?
This goes on the record. I actually agree with Ted Gambogi. This is a really hard thing, because we do have so many emotions wrapped into our thoughts about our history. I love history. I love Prescott, have renovated many, many historic projects. It's a tough one, because we have this idea that things can never change. But I have to say, I've talked to our city attorney here. I've talked to our other city attorney. I've had this thing analyzed. I have a history of working, actually, with historic preservation down in Phoenix. And I look at this thing, if I depart my emotion from the fact that I was told today by the historic preservationists that this project is now mostly in conformance. And so then I have to analyze, do I say no just because I don't want this project there, and then bring the city into a situation where we're going to be spending taxpayers' dollars to defend something that we're probably never going to win at the end of the day? We have some outlets. We can delay this. We can ask for, you know, SHPO, State Historic Preservation, to step in. There's a lot of things that we could probably do, but at the end of the day, I'm just not sure anything is going to change this. He has been in front of us, I think I heard today, was it 12 times, Kaylee? 12 times in total that we've been looking at these different projects, whatever it is. It's a lot. Was it 12?
No, no.
Okay. Total. Okay. But what I'm saying is, he has brought this next project here based on the comments of the Historic Preservation Committee, and we looked at the first one, and it was turned down. He came back now and has, and I'm going to quote, "He's mostly in compliance." So, you know, we, as a panel here, are in a situation where we've got to decide, are we going to just say no because we're emotional about this, and then possibly drag us into, you know, some kind of a lawsuit that we're probably not going to win? It's a tough decision, I have to say. But, you know, I'm not here because I want to be emotional. I want to basically do the right thing for the city of Prescott. And this guy does have property rights, and we have to honor that. It's not going to be the end of the world if it gets through. It's just how are we going to get to the final straw here that's going to break the camel's back? And I'm just not sure I want to drag this city into a multi-year lawsuit that's going to end up costing taxpayers a lot of dollars over this. So please, try to separate your emotion from the rights that he has and the fact that he has tried to comply. In fact, I was the one, when he came in front of council the last time, I purposely asked him, "If you come back and comply, or would you be interested in coming back and complying with the guidelines?" And Mr. Grissette said no at that time. But to my surprise, he actually did go back and rework the plan and come back, and he's mostly in compliance with this plan. So do understand that we, as a panel here, we've got to divide our emotion from the facts, and it's been a tough decision to kind of get to where we are today. So thanks for listening to that. I appreciate it.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, to your point, Mayor, I would like to see a little bit more of a detailed analysis from our Historic Preservation folks, in the sense of what they did when the, because I think the last time we heard this appeal, as other people have made the point of, it was an entirely different-looking set of, it was a different-looking building, frankly. And so, given that we kind of made the choice as a council to not have this go back to Preservation Commission, I'd still like to see that detailed analysis, personally. I think it would help, it would make me, I don't, I tend to agree with Connie. Like, it probably won't necessarily change the outcome, but I'd like to at least know, because when someone says it's in substantial conformance with our historical guidelines, I still kind of want to know, well, where are the areas that it's not, and how important are those areas? That would give me peace of mind, personally.
Councilwoman Freworth?
Thank you. I actually was about to say the exact same thing. I think it's our duty to hear from our staff, exactly in writing, where it conforms and where it doesn't. And I don't know how long it could take you to put something like this together, but I would imagine a week at the max, if we cleared your plate. I don't know. But I would like to meet the 60-day deadline, but I'd like to be able to do it, making a fully informed
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think in light of the fact that also this project still requires a special use permit, also necessitates a further analysis. I think, as a council, we need to understand that additional requirement, and I think that's fair to the public, that they know why we would approve a project that requires a special use permit. So that's just adding on to other comments.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, I agree with the last couple of comments that have been made, but I also want to append that I think that the community is having problems because it's new construction. And if you look at the SHPO guidelines, new construction is allowed. And I don't happen to agree with the representative for the developer that seems to suggest that we can't deal with issues of size and scale and design. I think that's exactly what our design guidelines are designed to do, and the guidelines of the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So I think, to echo other comments, I think the additional analysis is needed by our Historic Preservation Office. But also, albeit I know staff may not agree with this, I think we will find a lot more experience with projects of this nature around our state by inviting in the expertise, once again, from the SHPO Historic Preservation Office.
All right. I'm sure we've got some public comment.
We do, Mayor. Autumn Francis-Kline?
And please keep in mind, you have three minutes to make your points.
Now, Autumn, okay. David Segal?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. So why are we here today? This has already been denied back on March 26 of 2024. I'd like to place on the record, from the city of Prescott, administrative procedures. 9.18.1, Appeal. An appeal from any final decision regarding a city council or board of adjustment action, e.g., variances, conditional use permits, special use permits, text amendments, appeals of administrative interpretation, subdivisions, shall be filed with a court of competent jurisdiction within 30 days of the decision. If no appeal is filed in writing within 30 days, the decision shall be considered The point is, is you made a decision. It was unanimous. It was final at that point in time, based upon our own city records. So why are we here? Mr. Mayor, you know I have great respect for you, but when you say, "We tend to look at these things as a continuance," that is a direct contradiction to what's in the city documentation. It says, "The city council has the right to look at something as a continuance if they want to." No, it doesn't. In the last two days, I've spoken to the Planning Department, the Legal Department, and also Community Director, Development Directory, Director. All of them agree, the appropriate process, because your decision was final. Let him start over. Let's make sure that we have all the facts. Let's make sure that we have all the details. He can put in a new application. I, for one, would be in favor of that, but let's see it on record. Montoya, you were correct. Ms. Freworth, you correct. Mr. Moore, I agree. This idea of substantially compliance, what is the word substantially? 50%? 55%? 60%? No. We need to know exactly what we're working with. Each of those departments, thank you. Each of those departments have also agreed, the appropriate protocol is to start a new application. And I would like to know why city attorney has been speaking with council for the developer. I thought we were all talking about transparency. They have not filed their complaint with a court of competent jurisdiction. They have no legal right, in my opinion, to be making a complaint here before you and making threats.
Ken Fitick?
I'm going to admonish you one more time, and if you continue these outbursts, I'm going to have you escorted out. So please, we'll have decorum here. Put pros and cons. Put pros and cons.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Ken Fiddick. I live on Soaring Avenue in the city of Prescott, Arizona. I think this is the third time I've spoken either to the preservation group, that particular committee, and also the council here. I was going to say certain things, but I'm going to try to keep the emotion out of it. I second what Dave Segal just said. I second that. I think he's on the mark, even though we're not attorneys. Spend more time, get it right. Without bringing up a very touchy subject, the general plan didn't get through. Let's not rush this thing through either. Get all the information so the public can be 100% sure that a right decision is made. Otherwise, make it on the, put it on the ballot and let the people of this city decide whether this hotel should be on Whiskey Row or not. Okay? But if you're supposed to represent us, then represent the whole city and get everything in front of you, and then we can be confident that whatever decision is made is made correctly and appropriately for all the taxpayers and citizens of this city. So I will repeat again, this is the emotion, keep Prescott, Prescott. Thank you.
Rick Spring.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Rick Spring. I am the acting chair of the Historic Preservation Commission for the city of Prescott. You guys have pretty much hit a lot of the topics that we need to talk about. Just a couple of things. Back in the 40s, John Steinbach wrote in The Grapes of Wrath, "How will we know it's us without our past?" Mr. Grissette came before our commission a couple of times with a structure that will not meet the standards for here in Prescott. It was extremely large, and none of the materials in our preservation plan met our standards, which seems to be part of the contrast, or part of the problems we have now. I feel Mr. Grissette is doing an end run on the Preservation Commission. He is coming towards you instead of coming towards us. We should have been, I think, number one since the plans have been changed, whether they're arbitrarily or what, but we needed to see, see them first. Dunez here, our, the city's preservation specialist, needs to review those plans, bring them to us so we can give you an educated opinion on where we should go from here. Whiskey Row is the crown jewel of Prescott. We have only one chance to get this right. If we don't get it right, we will not have Whiskey Row. We need to preserve it, one way or another. Property rights, I understand, but there is a point where property rights need to be met. The city, I think, has rights, and the preservation has more rights. And the people have the right to understand and make an informed comment on them also. If Mr. Grissette should be allowed to proceed with this venture, I would still like the original plan to be brought before us before it comes to you. We need to make sure that this isn't a precedent, get a voice in the future of their city. So at this point, I am requesting the city council reject where it is today and send it back to the Preservation Commission. And I'd just like to quote John F. Kennedy for last, "Preserving our history is an investment in the future. It is a way to ensure that future generations can learn from the past and understand the journey that brought us where we are today." Thank you.
Glenn, and I apologize, I'm probably not going to pronounce the last name correctly. Pavela?
So I'm speaking from a little different point of view than some other people in this room. I'm one of the owners of the palace, which is located on Whiskey Row. Hotel gets built there, we'll sell some more meals and some more drinks. We'll make more money, but it's not the right thing. Character of Whiskey Row has been mentioned. Let's not forget it. You guys are the city council, you have important decisions to make here. I'm not being emotional, I'm being intellectual. Preserving the character will not happen with this structure. The comments that were just made from the Preservation Committee, something you really need to think deeply about. What they're saying is, clearly saying, not in compliance. You know, we can start having absolutes. You have all been threatened here today. And they used the name Goldwater, which is pretty clever, but I'm a little insulted by it because it's disingenuous. We have definitely been threatened. And I encourage you not to fold to those threats, okay? And there's something called a special use permit, was brought up a couple of times today. You do not have to issue special use permits. My expertise is in real estate, going back to 1974, and I've been an independent businessman since 1974. You're not dealing with somebody that just rolled out of bed and doesn't know business. You're not dealing with somebody that doesn't know real estate. I'm actually currently a real estate appraiser, and I'm very active and very involved with construction projects. And in the previous meetings, it was misrepresented to us, by the way, as to how simple the construction was going to be of demolishing three stores and then building a multi-story hotel. The Galloping Ghost was turned into a bank. Does everyone here know it took over a year and a half to complete an interior redesign without one change to the footprint? If you think this is going to be simple, no. Another point, and I'm really shocked that the hotel that was approved on the prior city property, I'm, I'm really shocked they actually didn't bring it up today. I would kind of hope they did, because that project put a substantial amount of additional parking. It's not too late. The permit hasn't been issued. I strongly urge the city of Prescott to adopt some kind of plan, and I tried to meet with the city attorney before, to adopt some kind of plan that if you change the footprint of a structure over 15%, you need to go ahead and provide additional parking. Probably be about 50 parking spots for this hotel. You need to think about all these factors. You don't have to issue a special use permit, and it's not in full compliance. Simple, black and white sometimes is how we have to evaluate things. Don't be intimidated by the word Goldwater or the threat of lawsuits.
Melvin Rup.
Hello, my name is Mel Rup. I live in Prescott. I prepared a letter that I emailed to all the city council members. Unfortunately, I didn't have Mr. Grady's email address, so you didn't see it ahead of time. But basically, I'm not going to just read it to you, because everything I was going to say, almost everything, has been said by some very thoughtful people out here. I have some key points I want to make. One, I attended all the meetings on this project, public meetings, and I'm basing my comments on extensive experience working with developers and clients and legal people, getting projects approved, major projects in historic areas. And when I first saw this proposal, or the idea of a project here, I thought, well, that'd be fun to work on, because what a challenge that would be to really do something that's compatible with what's there and doesn't destroy the historic aspect of it. And I was excited. But then when I started seeing these over-designed and overscaled designs, it was very disappointing. And a lot of the comments that people say, and they made major changes, those aren't major changes, not at all. And I would like to say, I, I think the Preservation Commission did an excellent job, and it wasn't emotional. There have been some insinuations here that they acted emotionally on their recommendation. They absolutely did not. They got input from a lot of professional people like myself at those hearings, but they were just citizens. They weren't staff or anything else. And one of my last comments in my letter was, as an alternative, which is, I think, consistent with some of the thinking of people here, I said, "If a revised plan were to be submitted, were to be submitted that was more modest in scale so that it gave the designers a chance to be more creative and reflect the site's physical constraints, historical character, and community desires, I believe it could be approved." And I think, I don't think anybody should get the idea that, no, we don't want any building there. You could do the right project there if you had the right consultant. And I never did see any qualifications of a consultant presented at any of these meetings. It was a sales job. We want a qualified consultant to do a real, sensitive design that's sensitive to the wishes of the people. If we lose 30 seconds, Mr. Rup. Very last quickly. I think it's worth fighting for, and I'm not going to be scared by some comments by a developer that he's going to sue us if we don't, if you don't let us jam this project down your throats. I'm not willing to accept that. I think it's worth a fight, and I don't care what it costs. There was some, something about spending the public's money. I think it's worth it to preserve the whole Whiskey Row project in the future. Thank you.
Sandy Griffiths.
And I would volunteer to assist. In fact, I've got a, some ideas of a, of a fight plan if we decide to sue him. I, I've got some ideas that I can lay out for you professionally prepared, not emotionally.
Thank you, Mr. Rup.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. I am not here to ask that you support the hotel project today. I understand that there are additional steps that the developer should take and implement and bring it back forward to the city. I am here, though, today to support this hotel project. I understand that Whiskey Row is more than a location, and so have all the other speakers before you. It's a living part of Prescott's soul. For generations, it has stood as a symbol of our city's resilience, identity, and Western charm. That's why any development in our historical area must honor the past while serving its future. And I, I am convinced that has come from every speaker today. I support that. I feel confident that this proposed hotel project is not to change the spirit of Whiskey Row. It is to ensure it remains vibrant and relevant for future generations. Prescott has always been a city of charm, character, and community, and courage. We need to continue that legacy, all of us, together. Thank you.
Ralph Rudardi.
Mayor and staff, thank you for the opportunity. I've been here before, and I've got to remind all of you, we elected you to represent us, the public, and you need to listen to us. We've talked about everything under the sun. One thing hasn't come up. Where in the world are you going to store the material? Where are you going to store all the equipment needed to tear something down? Half of the, the street is going to close up because you're going to have to block the sidewalk. You can't have people walking through it. You, you need to stop to think, and one of them is the parking. Where are you going to house those people to park their cars? On our, on my parking garage that, that we paid for? I've lived here for 86 years. I don't want Whiskey Row to be changed. And that person should have known that when he bought it, but he didn't because he was counting what's going to go in his wallet. But the thing is, there isn't a place close by that he can store his, all of his equipment that he's going to need, the trailers, all that housing. I'm in the construction business, I see all of that. This is going to be a jungle. And another thing is, you just finished talking about a project that's up the street of mine. I live on South Mount Vernon. That traffic is going to go up my way when you close down Montezuma so that they can build this hotel. And it's not going to be one month, two months, it's going to be a lot of months. So those are the things we have to start to think, is, do we want to tie up our town? The Christmas parade, the Fourth of July parade, everything that we have, where are they going to park? No, the building is good. There's a beautiful lot over here on Gurley, on East Gurley. Flat, they just flattened it out. Put it there. Prescottonian is doing a great job. Put another one in there. You can walk. It isn't that far to walk. But the thing is, what the, what the Preservation Committee said, we should obey what they say. But one of the things is, it's my hometown, and Whiskey Row is Whiskey Row. And I'm sad to see that the bank ended up in one end, but that's all right. But the thing is, preserve Whiskey Row. People come to see Whiskey Row, whether they go drink or whatever they do. I don't use it, but, but the thing is that...
Yeah, 30 seconds, Mr. Rudardi.
Thank you.
Rick Potock.
Mayor, city council, I don't want to reiterate everything that's been said already. Thank you. I would like to bring up just a couple of different points of perspective, and that is, whether it meets historical guidelines or building guidelines or whatever, that's great, you can meet the facts, you can meet the metrics and all that. The question I have is, how many hotels make enough downtown? You already have the Vendome, St. Michael, the Haciampa, others. Mayor, good, I thought I read a report maybe back in February where you asked, "What's the occupancy rate?" The answer was 60 to 70% at its peak. What is this additional hotel due to the others? Basically, it takes business away. A hotel isn't built, and then people flock to the town because, oh, there's a new place to stay overnight. They, they come for other attractions, and then that's the accommodation they have to stay in the city for additional time. So if it's boiled down to just, does this meet the guidelines? And that's the approval factor, yes or no? How many more hotels are going to be built then? Because if that's the only way you're going to judge it, then where does it stop? So you had said, how many Burger Kings are? We can't have a Burger King and a McDonald's on every corner. Well, that's where we're headed. And where this is headed is my Ohio Phoenix, in my eyes. I'm new to the area, but I certainly would never want to live in Phoenix. Prescott is an awesome place, much better than the town I came from. But I see this, the future, without really adding in, it's not emotion, but there's got to be some other factors that the city council has within their power beyond, does it meet the guidelines? Well, then we're forced to approve it. And that is, what does it do for the community, for the businesses around? If it steals business and doesn't add, bring more people in, then why are we approving it? You know, so what is, what is the real benefit of this to the town? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, I appreciate the, the comments. Many of your concerns I share. But as I said before, I think good public policy comes from good data that you can evaluate, and I think we're a little weak on the amount of information that we need to make a decision on this. So I would recommend that we postpone action until we receive the full analysis coming from the Community Development and Historical Preservation Commission specialist, and then we can decide what action that we want to take at that time.
And then we can decide what action we want to take at that time. So I'll listen to one more comment from Councilman Gamboge.
When I heard, when I listened to all the comments today, it kind of reminded me of what my father used to say. I don't know what I want, but I'll know it when I see it. We've got ships crossing in the night. There's this discussion of what you don't like versus the objectivity of the fact that that property is zoned to be for a hotel. And when you're dealing with these comments, they have theatrical value, like, keep Prescott, Prescott. I don't know what that means. I can't design something that says, keep Prescott, Prescott. Is that Prescott before Pioneer Parkway, before Costco? So I'll go back to what I mentioned earlier. I think it's really important that we understand the objective value of this project versus subjective concerns about it. This would generate multimillion dollars a year in revenue, and that means bed tax and sales tax. So when people ask, what do we get out of it? That's what you get out of it.
Through that, please. What are the statistics that support that?
Do you want to make a motion?
Mayor, I did want to just talk to you a little bit about scheduling, to the extent you make that 60-day deadline, if that's something you want to do. Next regularly scheduled council meetings not until...
August 26.
Which take should be on the August 16 date, so...
And there's quite a lot of dates where a number of you are not available because of the council break in between now and then. And I also don't know, I'm not Kaylee, I have no idea how long that full analysis would take for your staff, but that is something to take into consideration, too. Matt, I don't know your thoughts on the 60-day...
Let me, if Mr. Rich is still here?
Yes.
Can you come up for a moment, just have a bit of a dialogue? To the extent you want to answer this, you can. If you don't feel you're ready to, that's fine as well. But the City Council doesn't meet again until...
August 26.
Thank you. Which kind of takes you beyond the 60 days.
But we can set it to a date certain.
Right. So the council has a couple of options, right? One is to have a special meeting. The meeting can be done if everyone can't be here physically, through technological... Clerk.
Please, nobody second that. I would feel with, Matt's looking at the statute right now. I think a date certain is important when doing something like this. Like Matt said, we could do a special meeting, but I would need to, like, look at all of the availability that you all have provided me.
That's going to be difficult.
Which will be difficult over the next month. I'm not saying impossible, but definitely difficult. And so setting to a date certain with the caveat of it being a special meeting, I think, would not be possible. Yeah, we could do that.
Mayor Potock, may I have a comment?
I have an answer for you, if you want it now, or do you want me to wait?
No.
So 9843B says, "The municipality shall approve or deny application submittals for the activities prescribed in subsection A within 60 days after a submittal is deemed administratively complete pursuant to section 9835. Unless another timeframe is specified by municipal ordinance or state or federal law, if the municipality does not take action on the submittal within the applicable timeframe, the submittal is deemed approved." That's what I was afraid it said. "Unless the submittal is incomplete, the municipality provides a notice pursuant to 9495 and 9835, and the applicant fails to complete the submittal." So that's the actual statute.
All right. Let me ask real quick for clarification. When did the clock start running for the 60 days? Is it today?
June 16.
June 16. Okay. So our, so we could, and our break is over basically on August 26. Could we back that up a little bit and figure out if we can get close to the date? Because I know everybody has plans already.
Does his letter, a legal signal, or does it have to go through a court of law?
Is this considered administratively complete?
No.
That's a Chelsea question.
I mean, if they, we didn't get the appropriate full summary, from our perspective, it's not administratively complete.
So this was viewed, when it came in, as a continuation of the appeal. So the administrative completeness check and the process that staff typically takes to prepare it for PPC meeting, that was not, that was not conducted.
Well, we were told that this has to be looked at as a new proposal because of the substantial redesign. And we had to look at it as if it were a new proposal, not going back to the original proposal two years ago.
The applicant submitted a rebuttal to the council's deliberations in 2024. So we were directed to take it forward to council as what it was, without going through the process normally taken with PPC.
Which is inappropriate.
But it's not, it doesn't exist as it was before. It's been redesigned. So is this a new application?
We were not viewing it as a new application. It was a response to council's deliberations in 2024. It was a design response to what council and the PPC had originally provided the applicant.
Well, City Attorney, it looks like we're handcuffed by this 60-day...
Yeah, we can have a meeting on August 5th, the clerk tells us.
It looks like I only have one of you, Councilman Grady, that would not be available during that time, on that date, if what I have in front of me is correct.
August 5th is a primary election.
That's correct.
Yeah.
There's nothing in our code that precludes us from having meetings on Election Day. In fact, we're doing it in November.
I'm good with August 5th.
Well, I don't have a conflict. Councilman Ferworth?
So the question I have, is it possible, if we can meet on August 5th, is it possible for the preservation specialist and the preservation committee to do their thing and have it ready to us for August 5th? Because I don't want to meet again and not have the process and the information we need. I know you have a meeting on Friday. You could amend the agenda, but I don't think you have time to get it together.
Just pulling up a calendar real quick. The PPC meets the second Friday of every month, so the next meeting is August 8.
Do you want it to go to PPC, or did you just want Kaylee to? The last thing I heard was the...
Previous council direction is to have the Historic Preservation Specialist, which is Kaylee, do a full administrative analysis.
Yeah, Kaylee was going to do the comparison.
PPC is asked.
Okay, so it's up to Kaylee.
Good afternoon, evening. Kaylee Nunez, Historic Preservation Specialist. So some things have, the tides have changed here, and I am definitely willing to accommodate and do another analysis. I've done three already. So with that said, the issue is that August PPC date falls after the proposed council date. So I can get the report done in time for an August 5th meeting. I don't think we can get a Preservation Commission meeting done before that. We have one already scheduled this Friday, and all those, you know, that's in, the agenda's solidified. So the answer is, I can do it. Whether you want it to just come from me, or, you know, I know part of the process is me taking it to commission and informing them, so...
I amend my motion to move to a date of August 5th, with Kaylee reporting on the comparison that the City Council asked for.
I think that's sufficient. But you said that we do have a Preservation Commission meeting scheduled for July 11th, right?
Yeah, three days, yes. On Friday.
But you're probably not prepared to put this in front of the commission.
Well, we wouldn't be following the proper process. I don't, you know, I'm looking at Sarah's site right now, and we have like a very specific sequencing process with our agendas, and I submitted stuff for Friday's meeting. We do it two weeks prior.
Oh, we're obviously doing something that's not normal here.
It's, yes.
If the council's having a special meeting, the Prescott Preservation could have a special meeting as well. It's up to the commission.
Yes, I mean, we can make that happen. It would be a second meeting this month. I'm not the expert at these processes, the legal procedure, but I can get things right.
Acting Commission Chair Sprain, do you think that's a possibility?
It's highly possible. We can try to get all of our commissioners, make sure it is. It's not something that we've scheduled right now. Try to get it done that quickly.
Yeah, we'd have to make sure we could get quorum.
Are they all retired?
Not all. I think all but one.
So we could also include, Mayor, we could include it if possible. So if the council were to say, we're going to move this to August 5th and ask for as much analysis as possible from staff, we can try to work with the commission, fit in a meeting if we can, and either way, report back to the council on the 5th of what we were able to do and what information we have at that point.
All right. That sounds like a doable plan. So...
Councilman Gamboge.
Gamboge.
Is it still Tuesday? I move to schedule this item for a city council meeting August 5th at 3:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right. Well, that concludes this item. We'll be moving now to item 11G.
Discussion and possible action regarding a request from council members related to investigations and the release of information. Staff does not have a specific presentation for the council on this item, as it was a request from two council members. All of the information pertinent to this item was included in the memo and in the packet, unless there's anything from the city attorney. And I would kindly ask that everybody that is getting up and leaving the room, if you could please do so quietly, because we do still have items to discuss on the agenda. Thank you.
Now, if the council members who put the item on want to kick it off, that's fine. If they want me to kick it off, I'll try that.
Sure, go ahead.
Could somebody from city staff maybe go back and close those doors so that if people want to chat out in the hallway, they can do so?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to kick this off. There was a public records request that was made to the city, specifically asking for documents that are attorney-client privileged. When a request is made for documents, the city attorney office takes a look at the request and notes documents that we would not normally release under confidentiality rules, the attorney-client privilege being one of them. Specifically, there are requests for complaints and outside investigations concerning city manager Gregory, investigations into complaint of a former employee, various letters back and forth, letters of engagement of attorneys to do outside investigations. And the city puts together a privilege log when those items are requested. And we specifically said we're not releasing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 items that we deemed were attorney-client privileged. Now, the attorney-client privilege in Arizona is a privilege held by the council, specifically a majority of the council. So four out of seven of you could waive the privilege after informed consent, which hopefully we gave to you this morning regarding some of the risks associated with releasing documents that are otherwise privileged. And we talked about potential ways forward. One of them is the city can just take the position that we're not going to release the documents. They're attorney-client privileged. To the extent that the requister wants to file a special action lawsuit to try to get those documents, that's something they can do. The alternative approach is something called a declaratory judgment action. The Declaratory Judgment Act in Arizona allows for affected parties who want their rights determined by a court to file a special action. So one of the things we've done in the past, and one of the things you can do going forward, is direct the city attorney's office to file a declaratory judgment action and have the Yabai County Superior Court make the determination. Typically, what that involves is filing a complaint, then an answer will be filed, and then the parties will kind of argue the case a little bit. But fundamentally, the documents that are being withheld will be placed in what's called an in-camera review. That's where the judge is going to take a look at it in his chambers and make the determination after hearing arguments, whether or not the city can rightfully withhold the documents. A lot of this comes under something called the Carlson versus Pima County balancing test, where the city, even though there, you know, there's a very broad expectation in the state that records are public, there are exceptions. One of them is the records are confidential as a matter of law. The other is there are important privacy issues. That's implicated here because there were some settlement agreements with former officials and employees, and it's in the best interest of the city to not release them. The argument there is, you know, it's a chilling effect on both the attorney-client relationship and a chilling effect on having employees be honest with future investigations. So those are some of the options that you have. If you want to talk about it further, by all means, let me know. Or if you have some direction for staff, let us know.
Well, I'm not an attorney. However, I have watched all 562 episodes of...
Law and Order?
Law and Order. Okay. And I watched Ali Lot, too, but that's a different one. So I have to rely on the expertise of our attorney. I've discussed this with our city attorney, Joseph Young, and we spent a substantial amount of time discussing the options and the potential liabilities the city might incur based upon the demand that these confidential non-disclosure agreement terms be disclosed. So it's my opinion that the declaratory judgment action would shield us from current threatened litigation and clarify this issue not only for us... litigation and clarify this issue not only for us, but for the public at large. So based upon that understanding, I am going to make a motion right now that we direct the city attorney to pursue a declaratory judgment action in court to confirm our attorney-client privilege in these documents and based on executive session attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Second.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
I'm not going to hear it anyway. So we have a motion and a second? Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Check me if I'm wrong, City Clerk, but I think we've approached the adjournment section here.
We have indeed.
I'm not going to add another pithy quote from our founding fathers, but I would like to ask everyone, take a moment of silence for the terrible tragedy ongoing in West Texas and all the people in Kerrville and Kerr County. It's just beyond understanding to have such a fast, destructive, natural tragedy that's occurring there. So if you'll join me in a moment in silence and director prayers to all those people in Texas. We have such a privileged existence here in our city that sometimes we lose perspective in other places of the world that are dealing with such terrible tragedies. Thank you for that. And this meeting is adjourned, and I'll say, God bless America, and God bless Texas, and God bless Prescott.